Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, December the 12th, and I will call our meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
I was going to say no, no, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chair would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion.
Go ahead.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been properly seconded. It looks like we've got some conversation.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment and then I think I will make a motion to amend.
Okay.
If everybody look at Section J, we normally have a consent agenda, and a consent agenda is a series of minutes from prior meetings that would be all approved with one motion. Looks like Section J, we don't approve by sections. So are we going to go through four individual meeting minutes and approve? And so with that on the table, I think I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to title Section J as Consent Agenda.
All right, we have a motion. Mr. Dr. Hammer.
Yes, Mrs. Jordan.
One moment. So I've understood, just make sure I'm understanding correctly. So the motion is to change Section J, the approval of minutes, to the consent agenda so they can all be proved within one motion.
Yes. This is not a big deal. I mean, we could go through four of them.
I guess, Dr. Hammer, looking for some clarity. It's my understanding that we may not be able to amend an agenda to add a consent agenda as it would have to be posted as a consent agenda. Is that correct?
That's what I'm trying to do, the analysis. In my mind, I know the Board has the ability to amend the agenda. I do think just, I do think it would be cleaner for the Board to keep it as is and go through the four separate motions.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Were you okay with withdrawing?
Withdraw my motion.
All right. We withdraw the second. I believe there was a second to his motion to amend, or no? Okay. Then no need to withdraw. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Appreciate that, and something we will look at. You are correct. Normally, we do have a consent agenda, and we'll look at it for next time. Appreciate it. Any other amendments to the agenda? All right. All in favor, say the word saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, dismissals, resignations, information-only administrative leave, suspension without pay, substitutes, and the goals of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A1; and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons, and disciplinary matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A2; and to review information related to school safety and security pursuant to the public safety and security exemption of Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A19.
All right, we have a motion. Move into closed session.
Second.
Perfect. For the reasons that the Vice Chair mentioned, there is a second that I've heard. Any discussion? All in favor, say the word saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are in closed session till approximately 7:00 PM in which we will reconvene. Thank you.
I move that the Board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to reconvene from closed session. Any discussion? Seeing none in favor, say the word saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are reconvened.
I move that to the best of each Board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board.
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to certify the closed session. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
All right, we're certified.
Mr. Chairman, we have two motions coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent. Any discussion? All in favor, say the word saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move to release, I move to approve the release of students A and B from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the release of students A and B from compulsory attendance for religious reasons. Any discussion? All in favor, say the word saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we are to the point of our meeting where we will typically do staff and student recognitions, and I know we're doing that a little bit differently this evening just due to the number of folks we are recognizing. So unless there's any other comments, we will head over to the James Wood Middle School Auditorium, 1313 Amherst Street. We'll recognize some folks over there, and then we will return to this room for some additional recognition in the remainder of our Board meeting. All right.
Good evening, and welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. This past September, the following FFA students from Frederick County and Robert E. Ailer Middle Schools and James Wood, Millbrook, and Shirando High Schools competed at the Virginia State Fair with the following results. Frederick County Middle School, Junior Hippology, CDE fourth-place team, Marley De Haven, ninth-place high individual. And if you could please stay forward for your team. Thank you. All right. From Robert E. Ailer Middle School, Middle School Agroscience Contest, second-place team, Emma Walco, fifth-place individual. From James Wood High School Student Garden Design Senior Agricultural Demonstration Career Log Throw Event, ninth-place individual, Kobe Cross-Cut Saw Event, ninth-place individuals, From Millbrook High School Hippology Competition, From Shirando High School Career Exploration and Horticulture Contest, Mahala Martin, first-place For the Dairyman's Contest, first-place team, Rebecca Stout, second-place individual. And for teams, please remember to stay forward. For our Dairyman's Contest, fourth-place team, In November, students from James Wood and Shirando High Schools participated in various competitions at the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis. Results are as follows. From James Wood High School National Proficiency and Service Learning, Emily Shell, silver, national National Proficiency in Small Animal Production and Care, oh, sorry, that was for Mackenzie Henchall, but she's not here this evening. National Food Science Team, Broadens Rated Team, From Shirando High School Milk Quality and Products Contest, eighth-place team overall, fourth-place in Team Problem, and national gold rating, Rebecca Fatima Wise Carver, or I'm sorry, Emma Wise Carver. Next, we have our FCPS Honorary Award. In September of this school year, a student experienced a medical emergency while onboard the school bus. Without hesitation, students from James Wood High School took action to care for the student while shielding them, while shielding the student from any unnecessary attention. These five students are receiving the FCPS Honorary Award tonight for displaying excellent character and taking heroic actions to impact their school community. Their bus driver, Mr. Frank Ramsey, is also in attendance this evening. Mr. Ramsey, if you could please stand to be This past November, students from James Wood High School's One Act Team traveled to Liberty High School in Fallkeer County to compete in the 2023 VHL, VHSL Region 4D Theater Arts Competition. Their performance earned them a ranking as the 2023 VHSL Region 4D Champions. Congratulations. Emma Waschner, also Best Actor Award. Virginia Press, also Best Actor Award. In October, James Wood High School seniors, Katryia Powers, Corinne Riddle, competed in successful auditions for the 2023 All-Virginia Senior Honors Choir, which was held in Richmond, Virginia in November. Katryia is an alto II, and Corinne is a soprano I. If you all could please come forward. Congratulations. Girls Cross Country Team participated in the state championship at Oatman's Farm in Leesburg and placed fourth. Congratulations to each of you. Now we're on to James Wood High School Golf. Brayden Rockwell is the first Colonel's golfer to reach the VHSL State Tournament in the last 10 years. Brayden was one of 60 golfers in Class Four to make it to the state tournament, one of 18 to make it as an individual. He finished 19th in the state by shooting a four over par, 76th in the state championship in Williamsburg. In November, the James Wood High School Volleyball Team traveled to Richmond, Virginia to play Hanover High School. to play Hanover High School in the Class Four State Championship. The team defeated Hanover High School, and they are back-to-back Class State Four Champions. Congratulations. Kennedy Spade. Ashlyn Spence. Alexis Taylor. Adeline Pitcock. Kyla Wilhelm. Kenley Madison. Hannah McCullough. Paige Quelo. Brianna Corbin. Claire Kiefer. Ethan Germaier, manager. Ricky Spear, manager. Adrian Patrick, head coach. And Brandy Corbin, assistant coach. The James Wood High School cheer team also had a very successful season. They are the Northwestern District Cheer Champions, runners-up in the Region 4D Cheer Championship, and place six at the VHSL 4A State Cheerleading Championships. Congratulations. Haley Baltista, alternate. Kiana Brooks. Lauren Burkhammer. Emily Clubb. Isabella Didiana. Madeline Groot. Raylan Holmes. Carly Lemmons. Kelsey Martin. Ashlyn Moon. Damaya Page. Savannah Salmon. Kalen Taverner. Amira Warner. Haven Yost. Jaden Yost. Emma Allen, manager. Wendy DeMayo, head coach. Michaela DeMayo, assistant coach. Earlier this year, Ms. Patricia Black was recognized in an LRJ event for LRJ Foundation's Exemplary School Leadership Award, recognizing dedication to mental wellness. The award states the following: honoring three years of commitment and dedication, ensuring her students and school community thrive through interactive mental health and wellness education programs and initiatives. Congratulations. And before we depart, if the bus driver and the students of the honorary achieve an award, if they could please come forward for a photo together. Come on down at this time. Oh, wait. I think we're missing one. Hold tight. Oh, good. All right, we want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and congratulations to each and every one of our award winners and their coaches and sponsors and parents. So, we are now going to head back over to the administration building to conclude the remainder of our school board meeting. You're welcome to join us, or you can depart at this time. Thank you.
All right. We are still in session. Had a great recognition of a number of students and a variety of ways that they're participating and representing the students, or representing our community in Frederick County Public Schools, and so appreciative of their hard work, the work of their families, as well as those adults who work for our system, who support them and volunteer to help them day in and day out. So, I'm super proud of those students and excited to see where their future takes them. With that, we do have some additional recognition, and so I will turn it over to Dr. Hummer for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We would like to welcome Mr. Brian Davis as our new Director of Facility Services. Mr. Brian Davis, you'd mind coming up to the podium? Do you want to be in a round of applause? Mr. Davis brings 28 years of facilities and maintenance experience to this new role. We're very excited for him to join our team. Mr. Davis has a bachelor's degree in business administration from East Carolina University, and he currently resides in Maryland, as well as he will be planning on relocating to the Winchester area. So, Mr. Davis, welcome, and if you have any words to say to the board.
No, just thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to just diving in and seeing what's going on and really just getting after it. I'm pretty excited. So, Monday will be my first day, and I'm ready to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Davis. Excited to have you as part of our Frederick County Public Schools family and looking forward to the work that you'll do, leading our facilities department. We've got a lot of work to do and excited to have you get started next week. All right. Next, we will move to our citizen and staff comments. And... We do have a few folks that have signed up this evening. I'll remind everyone that the Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, total time allowed for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes, and those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state their name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or the appropriate committee. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens and speakers. It's our hope that you show the appropriate respect and courtesy to the board in return. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments, and school board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. So, with that, I will invite Ms. Woodard up to share on behalf of her group.
I feel like I haven't done this in forever. Okay, I am Sharice Woodward, and I'm representing FCEA. And as a teacher and the leader for the FCEA community, I would like to take a moment to extend my sincere gratitude for your unwavering service and dedication to our school district and community. Your consistent efforts have resulted in creating safe, engaging, and well-equipped schools that provide the best possible education for our children. Your commitment to providing our students with the necessary resources to support their academic and personal growth is truly admirable. We recognize that being a school board member is a challenging role that requires perseverance and sacrifice, but your work ethic has not gone unnoticed. Your leadership and vision have influenced the future of our community, and for that, we are immensely thankful. Your contributions to students and their families, as well as those who have worked with them, have made a remarkable difference, and we are all better off for it. I know many of you have had, have always sought to hear the voices of the Frederick County staff, and we have been a voice, and have been a voice of reason, always trying to keep the board in line. Thank you for your service to our school district and community, and your contributions have left a lasting impact, and we are truly grateful for that all of you all have done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Dr. John Lamanna.
John Lamanna, Gainesboro District. Board members, superintendent. I thank those board members who will be leaving the board at the end of their term. I welcome the newly elected members and wish them success as they lead and advocate for strong public education in Frederick County. But I'm here today to thank Michael Lake for his 12 years of dedicated service. For his 12 years of dedicated service to Frederick County Public Schools, I had the privilege of serving with Mr. Lake for his first eight years of his tenure. A quick history about Mr. Lake. Mike grew up in Frederick County on a farm that he worked with his family up at 5:00 a.m., home by 6:00 p.m. after football practice to finish work on the farm. Following high school, Mike joined the CIA, finished college, and a 30-years career internationally with the agency. After serving our country in faraway places, knowing secrets we don't want to know, Mike returned home safe. Coached football at James Wood High School and ran for the school board. From day one of his service, he was active in the community. During the 12 years he has served, you would see Mike Lake at school events, sporting events, choir, band, plays, judging, a spelling bee. Whatever our students were involved, Mike was there. Mr. Lake served on many leadership positions while serving on the board, committee chair of the finance committee for many years, and as vice chair. As finance chair, I was impressed how Mike always tried to balance the financial needs of the division with the county's financial management. Mike, I recall, directed his work on the board resting on three major principles. What needs to happen to promote quality instruction would be done. What interferes will not. What needs to happen to ensure parental collaboration will be done. What interferes will not. What needs to be done to ensure competent staff, teachers, and leaders will be done. What interferes will not. I truly hope as a board with its new members beginning in January that they too adopt a similar set of principles. Mr. Lake's competency and commitment to public education was recognized by the VSBA, Virginia School Board Association, appointing him to the State Executive Board. Mike has had a life of service to our country, to our state, and to our local community. Frederick County Public Schools has been indeed fortunate to have his genuine commitment and dedication to public education. Thank you, Mike Lake. Will you join me?
Thank you, Dr. Lamanna, and thank you, Mr. Lake. Next speaker will be Kevin Callanan.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me some time. I wanted to address one issue real quick. I would like to recognize, Mr. Monk, over the last three or four years that have been pretty contentious, your deportment and carriage and calmness and very uncalmed times were always amazing. I was amazed and impressed by that, and I wanted to thank you, and I know that's been recognized by so many people in the community. I hope you will continue to look for other ways to serve our community because you have deported yourself as a true gentleman. So, just some recognition. Second thing, I just wanted to share with this board and with the remaining members of the board who will be with us next year on two items. One, I know we are speaking about a fourth high school, and I do want to share something, and I've collected this information from the Virginia Department of Education, that at the elementary level, and I, and I want to compliment Dr. Hummer. I wanted to come by and I want to always, I really respect Dr. Hummer. He has done an amazing job in his short time here, and he's done an amazing job of communicating. And unfortunately, I was down in Florida getting a tan rather than hanging out with any of the open houses, which I really did want to make. And I stopped by, I said, "I'd like to speak to Dr. Hummer," a few minutes just before this meeting, and he was kind enough to call. Many leaders would not have done that. So, kudos to you, and thank you for sharing some really good information. But I wanted to share just some points for the remaining members' consideration. Right now, our elementary school and our middle school numbers are flat. Literally, from 2014 to 2024, there was an increase of 81 elementary students across the board, and all schools came through, or first through fourth. At the middle school, there was only an increase of 115 students from 4,069 to 4,189. So it's a relatively flat increase. We, as you and I talked about, there has been a pretty explosive growth in the high school, but the high school kids are leaving us now. So, just, I would ask that we take additional views on what we're doing population-wise, and are we truly going to have that growth? Because the commitment of a $155 million high school, not including the interest payments, will be a significant increase in our debt. Now, I know that we have looked at, and I guess the CIP talked about, looking at annex expansions versus other schools. That's something I'll be advocating with the county board to take an additional look at. I just, my concern is, we could be just like the villages of Orchard Ridge, which built all these homes for all these boomers who are now all dying, and then there's only a few millennials to fill all those houses. I'm just concerned that we might build a school that is a little too large for the amount of kids. Thank you again, Dr. Hummer. I really appreciate the time and call, and look forward to continued conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Katry Powers. Wonderful, thank you.
Hello, my name is Katry Powers, and I'm a senior at James Wood High School, and I'm also part of the choir program, which you guys may have heard a few things about. So, two years ago, I sent letters and emails to each of the school board members advocating for the performing arts at James Wood and just across the county, but since James Wood was getting their renovation, I thought they would want to hear a little bit more about our necessities. So the initial James Wood renovation plans didn't address storage spaces, more expansion for our stage and bathroom and dressing rooms needed for each of our departments. And my project reached out to each of the members on our school board at that time, and I explained why those necessities were in our department and why they were needed, but I never, I never received a single response from any of our school board members concerning any of those concerns. And the school board should represent and communicate with their staff and students and their administrators that they have, but instead, our concerns are not worthy because we don't pay the taxes and we're just students. And many times while conducting my project, I heard that, "We'll see if there's money for it." And I've recently heard that too, after the renovations, that "We'll see if there's money to make those changes." And I just don't understand why our school system focuses on our money rather than what the students need. And our, before the renovations, this could have been handled discreetly, but it took the students speaking out at a town hall meeting in front of the press, and it was released to the Winchester Star, and we could have handled this inside and not had this come out to the public. And many of you don't see the process of what our rehearsals entail, you just see the final products. And I think that you guys would see a lot more of what goes into these performances and what goes into the classroom setting, because I think that you should be able to lead based off of what you see in our classes. That is most vital time is whenever you are inside our classrooms, not what just the end result is. And that's during our rehearsals. So just observing what a classroom setting looks like, you would know how to represent us and how to lead us more, like, just better. And our school board doesn't have any representation for just the performing arts. Our schools have been growing, so have our performing arts. And we're split in between performing arts and the English programs. And English is a core class, and they can't represent both English and performing arts evenly. So a lot of that recognition and representation doesn't go towards where it needs to be because you guys have other duties. So I think that there needs to be a better ratio to how much our schools have been growing based off of what our school board looks like, since we are a growing school system. And, oh, I just want to thank Dr. Hummer for taking everything into consideration because just in 10 months, you have shown us a lot more recognition than what we've had in the past couple of years, and we're just, we just don't want to hear any more excuses anymore. We just want to hear solutions for the students at our school. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. All right. Next, we have Vanessa Lonziak, representing a group of students here. Wonderful, thank you.
And I get five minutes to speak, correct?
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
All right. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Vanessa Lonziak, and I'm coming from the Redba District to talk to you about recycling. Bryn Chivone, who is in the audience tonight, from the Gainesboro District, is my main partner in this project. In the past few years, recycling bins have been disappearing from FCPS. Overall, our school district has been becoming less sustainable. For example, reusable trays and silverware have often been replaced by styrofoam and plastic alternatives. Sustainable options that FCPS had in the past have been done away with because they are too expensive. With recycling showing to be more sustainable and cost-effective in the long term, it is important that our county considers re-implementing it. Recycling seems expensive at first, but without recycling, we will be paying more over time ecologically and monetarily. Recyclable plastic items are made from fossil fuels like crude oil. Because these resources take millions of years to produce, and we are harvesting them faster than the earth can keep up, they are very scarce resources. The fuel shortage will continue to worsen, which I'm sure does not sound good to anyone. Frederick County can actually mitigate feeling the effects of such a shortage by recycling. We ran a simulation released by the Environmental Protection Agency, and if every high school student recycled just one 20-ounce plastic bottle a day for a whole school year, that would save a net 111,436 kilowatts of energy per school year. That's enough to power an air conditioner for almost 22 school years straight. Now, just think about how much energy and money would be saved after multiple years. This energy could go towards powering our schools, which would lower the energy bill over time, or it could help out local farmers, seeing as though agriculture is the largest industry in the county. I believe that the school board cares about the county's children and wants to provide them with a bright future. It is imperative to think long-term when deciding what's best for the children. Even though recycling may seem expensive to implement now, it is the best option for the next generation. On October 26th, we started a petition to bring back recycling in order to gauge the level of support, and we currently have 225 signatures. We are well aware that switching back to recycling all materials in our schools would be difficult as it presents many challenges. However, it benefits all of us in the long term and would be a well-supported decision as shown by the petition. While plastic recycling should be a priority for our schools within a larger timeframe, tonight, we have a much simpler request. As a starting point, we would like you to consider re-implementing student-accessible recycling bins for paper-only in just the high schools. The EPA simulation states that a substantial amount of energy would be saved per school year from recycling paper as well. Beginning to recycle paper once more would be a perfect small step to work towards re-implementing plastic recycling, and solutions can be found to any obstacles that arise. Millbrook and James Wood High Schools already have recycling bins from Republic Services dedicated to cardboard. FCPS high schools could get paper-only recycling bins from Republic Services as well, since they have previously partnered with them. There is a problem at Millbrook where the cardboard recycling dumpster is being contaminated by trash thrown in the dumpster by random people, which forces the school to pay an extra pickup fee. This problem could be solved by purchasing a recycling dumpster with a lock on it from the waste management company, because the Republic Services one does not have a lock on it. A predicted issue with in-class paper recycling bins is kids throwing things besides paper into the bins. To prevent this, an education portion could ensue by way of some kind of mass announcement or assembly to teach kids about what is acceptable to put in the recycling bins. Signs could also be put on the recycling bins indicating that they are for paper only and what is acceptable to put in them. As for who would collect the recycling, a school club could sponsor the recycling program and make sure to remove contaminants from the recycling before emptying it into its respective dumpster. Another option that has historically worked better is to have special education students collect recycling from classrooms on a regular basis. This method was implemented at James Wood Middle School while they had recycling, and it was reliable. Even if the paper-only recycling program is implemented in an experimental way, it would help to work out any kinks in the system and find the best way to keep recycling in our schools for a while. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out on this issue. We hope to have our voices not fall onto deaf ears, and we wish to see our vision come to fruition. We have confidence that you will take our words into consideration and make the decision that you see fit for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Ms. Lonziak. Wonderful. Are there any other comments this evening? If you could just come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Timford Back Creek District. Mr. Lake, I want to thank you for your years of service. Even though we may not have always agreed on things, you've always been very, very, your integrity has always been there for polite, and you can hold a conversation with you and not ever have an issue. Mr. Comstock, same thing. I want to thank you for your years of service on this board. Again, anywhere we've had a conversation, you've always been respectful and answered. And I do agree with keeping your integrity of, to your answers to you, how you voted. Mr. Hummer, I can't ask for anybody else to be more transparent than you've been so far. And I ask that you continue to be transparent while opening up these boxes of disasters that you're finding going on today. That's, thank you for that. Mr. Monk, can't ask for a nicer guy to be sitting in that chair. The integrity that you've brought to this board is phenomenal, and I just want to thank you for your service on doing that. The only other comment I have, well, Mr. Heston, fortunately you lost a vote. There's no other way of saying more people dislike you than like you. Learn from it, move on, and hopefully everything goes better in your, whatever you plan to do. By all means, everybody, please have a very Merry Christmas, or whatever holiday you say, and a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. We'll move to the next portion of our meeting, which is the approval of the minutes. Before us, we have the October 27th School Board Fall Training Session Meeting Minutes. Is there any discussion on these meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the School Board Fall Training Session Meeting Minutes from October 27th, 2023, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made properly seconded to approve the School Board Fall Training Session, October 27th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say the vote is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next is a special-called School Board Meeting Minutes for October 27th.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from the special-called School Board Meeting on October 27th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is made properly seconded to approve the special-called School Board Meeting Minutes for October 27th, 2023. All in favor, say the vote is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from the Joint School Board and Board of Supervisors CIP Work Session on November 20th, 2023.
Second.
Motion is made properly seconded to approve the Joint School Board and Board of Supervisors CIP Work Session Meeting Minutes from November 20th, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, say the vote is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Minutes from the Capital Improvements Plan Budget Work Session held on December 7th, December 7th, 2023.
Second.
Motion is made properly seconded to approve the Capital Improvements Plan Budget Work Session Meeting Minutes that was held on December 7th, 2023. All in favor, say the vote is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on our docket is a report from the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Hummer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple items that I would like to mention. First and foremost, I want to congratulate all of our students and staff for their recognitions and accomplishments. Our students' work ethic and dedication to success has led them to some amazing accomplishments, and I'm so thankful to enjoy the celebrations with them and their families. I'm also very proud of all of our staff, and I want to make sure we continue to get some great staff in front of our students and as they continue to lead them in order to achieve all the accomplishments that they continue to do. I also want to welcome Mr. Brian Davis, who apparently just left, but looking forward to him joining our team, and I just really appreciate all, my team of bringing some great people on board, and we're looking forward to what he can do for our school division. I also want to take this moment to acknowledge and recognize all of the hard work that we've done over the last three months with our school board retreat, our capital improvement planning, as well as our budget planning, and our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, which I've heard a lot of positive feedback about. The work that goes into the preparation for these meetings is essential, and it's a lot of hard work to make sure that we get the most up-to-date, accurate information in front of you all so that we can make some informed decisions on doing what's best for all of our students. I just wanted to take this time to first and foremost thank each of you for all of this hard work, because it does take because it does take a lot of time, takes a lot of meetings, takes a lot of preparation, and I'm very thankful for this time that we've spent together thus far. Also want to thank our Board of Supervisors for their commitment to the collaboration that we're going to be continuously doing as we continue to work through the capital improvement planning and the budget planning. And I also want to thank our staff. They've put a lot of tireless hours and work in regards to the preparation of all of the amazing things that we're putting forth before you to do what's best for our students, and I'm looking forward to this continued work together for our students and our community. So I just want to take that time to thank everybody for that. I also want to take this time to recognize four of our school board members that are going to be coming off of the board. Mr. Bradley Comstock, Mr. Brian Hester, Mr. Mike Lake, and Mr. Brandon Monk. I appreciate your dedication to our students and our community. Your unwavering, and I want to emphasize that unwavering strength, to always do what's best for our students and always taking us back to why we do what we do. And I greatly appreciate the time that we've spent together on this board. We all hope that you continue to be involved in our school community and hope we continue to stay in touch, because that is very important to me, it's very important to us, especially seeing how much you are dedicated to our students and our community. As a token of our gratitude, we would like for each of you to come down individually to receive a small plaque of our appreciation. It's a very small token of appreciation. I wish I can bottle up all my emotions and genuine feelings towards all that you have done for us, but unfortunately, I can't do that. So first, I would like Mr. Bradley Comstock to come down, and then we'll call each of you others down individually and we'll take some pictures. Thank you. Come on down, please.
Don't break it.
Mr. Mike Lake.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. That's me.
And our Chair, Mr. Brandon Monk.
I now, on behalf of the school board myself, would like to now call down Mrs. Amy Scott. Please come on down, please. So for those that don't know, Amy Scott, this is her second job here for Frederick County. She was named the Clerk of the Board back when I first started, back in February. And she has done a lot of great things, she has a lot of great ideas, she has a very good keen sense of details. And she also provides me with mints up here. So if you see us up here chuckling, it's because I'm out of mints. So bravely appreciate what you've done. We got you some small little token, we got you some flowers up here, and we just thank you so much for all that you do.
Mr. Chair, if I may add something, please keep in mind that Amy Scott will still be joining us. She will just be taking over her main role as Communication, and we will be looking at adding a new Clerk of the Board here in a second. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I'll reserve some comments for Ms. Scott in just a few moments when we do our Clerk of the Board, new clerk designation. All right, and thank you, Dr. Hammer, for the recognition on behalf of those of us who will not be here in just a few months. It's been a pleasure working with you and looking forward to continuing some of that great success with the new board. All right, next we'll move to unfinished business. Item on our agenda, that is the Board CIP priorities there. And I know, Dr. Hammer, I'll pass this to you for some context.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do want to add some items here for some context, and then I want to open up to conversations as well as an action that we will be asking you all to take this evening. First, we started these conversations back during our retreat back in October, where we were taking a look at our projects that we want to take a look at over the next 10 years, as well as looking at the age of our buildings, with the growth patterns that we are seeing. Then we continued that conversation in November. As I mentioned to you all earlier, as you know, you were all there with the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. Thought that went very well, we had a lot of productive conversations, we seeked a lot of feedback and input. And then I've also been having my town halls, as some constituents mentioned. We've got a lot of positive feedback on that, we had a lot of great questions. And then we had our CIP Work Session on Thursday, where we broke this down a little bit more. We answered some more questions in regards to the direction that we are going in as a school division and making sure that we get ahead of these projects. So before you, this evening, Mr. Chair and School Board, is we have some items that we are recommending that we approve and move to the Board of Supervisors for approval as well, to factor into the, all the projects that are happening here in Frederick County. We do have 17 items, though, that we are going to have to keep an eye on over the next 10 years, and we want to make sure that we are continuously reviewing these items. And as I've mentioned to you all in each of the presentations that I just discussed with you, is that the CIP project is definitely a unique process. It is a five-year project plan, however, it can change every year, based on our needs, based on projects that don't get approved, based on projects that do get approved, a lot of other variables that are factored into there. So one of the recommendations that I want you all to take into consideration is not sending all 17 items downtown. However, sending that are top priorities that the team and I, and with conversations with you all that we feel are our top priorities at this moment in time, which they are the fourth high school, Middletown Elementary Expansion, which we had a conversation of looking at Armel or Middletown, and we had conversations about why that shift happened because of the growth that we're seeing in that part of the school, that part of the county, as well as the Jordan Springs Elementary Expansion as well, with the growth in the northeast part of the school division as well. So the other items on here, as I mentioned in previous conversations, unless we move these into a top-three or top-four downtown, I want to make sure it doesn't distract us in regards to the items that we need to move forward now, but up for discussion in regards to the top three going downtown for your approval, as well as the other items if we want to have further conversation. So, Mr. Chair, my staff and I are here to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer, appreciate that. And as he shared, this is for those who maybe the first time seeing our board has been having conversations for a good while around it, and we may have some continue tonight, but looking forward to it. And appreciate the work that you and the team did to provide this information. I know we asked for a lot this year, and I'm thankful that we've received some good information to be, help us make informed decisions around the projects to be able to send downtown. So appreciative of the work that went into that. With that, as Dr. Hammer shared, there is a recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools to move forward with three projects there. And so if it's the pleasure of the Board, we might discuss those and then potentially move to the others. But it is, what is the will of the Board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
Are we voting on these individual items? Or are we putting the top-three priorities into one motion?
We can take it either way. It'd be my recommendation that we move forward with them as one motion, if that's the pleasure of the Board, for the top three.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendations for the top-three CIP priorities for 2025.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
All right, a motion has been made properly seconded to move forward with the Superintendent's recommendation of the top-three priorities to include a fourth high school, a Middletown Elementary Expansion, and a Jameswood Elementary, or, excuse me, Jordan Springs Elementary Expansion. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I want to first thank the staff for all the work that you guys have put in. I know in years past, we've asked for a lot of transparency. I know it's been one of the big things with the community. We have numbers that we've gathered from downtown. We've got numbers from our current enrollment, projected enrollment. And, you know, weighing the options, I was one of the folks that was always about trying to do the expansions first. But taking a look at the challenges that come with it, with adding in bigger cafeteria sizes, hallway sizes, it just doesn't seem like a feasible option. We do have a growth plan going out the next 10 years, and it shows that we are going to be in need of this with the incoming developments coming into the community. And just based upon our needs within the school. My request that I've been asking for the whole time is, when we do this, let's do this responsibly. Let's do this where, you know, we're not going in and having to add on an expansion. We're not having to go in and change the way the classrooms are set up. I think the Building and Grounds Committee has set forth a good precedence of being more involved within the building process. We've passed different policies on that, where the school board will have more active role. And I know that Dr. Hammer is also committed to taking the community's recommendations on some things and looking at that and having that community input. What are the needs of our students? What are the needs for these programs? How are we fitting in CTE programs, to name a few? I mean, these are one of the things that we've been looking at, is how do we expand those CTE programs? We currently have students out there who are trying to get into these CTE programs, and there's no space available for them. I think this will help alleviate some of those concerns. And then, you know, it doesn't have to be like some of the constituents say, a Taj Mahal, right? This is a place of learning. Let's make it as such and make it the most impactful for those students out there, for the community and the growth of the future. So with that, that's why I am in favor of putting these recommendations forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Other comments from Board members? Mr. Lake?
Yeah, I'll say something, Mr. Monk. So, obviously, go to vote in favor. But I'd like to see, after the new year, Mr. Superintendent, continue your town hall mantra. And the thing about CIPs and the projects, they're real. This is real buildings, this is real crowding. There is real construction. If you go to Middletown Elementary School, and if you drive in a circular mile, it will scare you to death. Just to think of where is that zoning, of that zone of schools, going to go? There's bulldozers in every direction down there. And it's just that you can go show people, you can go take them there. You can go, you can make them, you can have them stand there and see it. And I think, let's get the things on the list downtown, and then let's get ahold of the supervisors that take seat in January. Take them around the county, show them. Take them, you know, my favorite, my favorite's always lunchtime at Shorando. You can take, you can take your life in your hands there. And so just, just take them, show them, and that should make the case. But yeah, definitely in favor of the three, as are stated.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Other comments from Board members?
Mr. Chairman, I will be in voting in favor for this. It was my commitment to my constituents and the county to move ahead with the fourth high school. I'm proud to see that. I'm proud to see Dr. Hammer gaining community support and finally putting it in a way where people can really, truly understand the need. It is time to stop kicking the can down the road, and it's time to start breaking ground. Our students deserve this, our community deserves this, as Mike Lake said. Every district in the county, there's new builds, there's bulldozers. You can hear them from my house, and I'm sure from many other areas in the county. We have to start planning for growth. We cannot afford to push this down the road and have our constituents pay 50 more million dollars what we could have gotten for a much cheaper, almost a decade ago.
Thank you, Ms. White. Other comments from Board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock.
I want to thank Dr. Hammer and his staff, really, for all of the work. They've spent the past at least three months really, really diving into this in a much deeper way than I think a lot of the public is aware. They've worked hand-in-hand with, you know, with counterparts downtown to really get a thorough understanding of the growth that is here, not just coming, but what's already here and what is to come as well, and put a lot of work into these projections. And then didn't just kind of put in front of us the same list of things because they've been on the list. You know, Armel was originally on that list, but in evaluating the growth that's actually come to the southern end of our county, you know, looking at that and understanding the growth and the building that's happening, as, as Mr. Lake mentioned right there, right around Middletown Elementary, but also up into Stevens City, which is zoned for Middletown. There's, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of homes that have gone in in a very, very fast period of time, and all of those kids need a place to go. So, you know, I appreciate his work on that and a willingness to say, well, yeah, we were thinking about Armel, but you know what, maybe Middletown's the better place for that. Let's not just drive something forward because it's been on the CIP for 10 years, but really deep dive and evaluate, are these things, things that we need? And I think, after really being a part of these meetings, seeing the data, hearing from staff, I don't think there's any way to refute that these are things that are here and needed, and some of them overdue. I think that I just want to maybe caution against, I don't, I'm confident we're not going to build a school that's going to sit empty. I understand constituent concerns. I think if we're looking at data from 2021, you're looking at the tail end of COVID, when a lot of students had alternate arrangements and had pulled out for virtual and things like that. And if you look at the numbers from '21 to '23 to now, we have surpassed those numbers by several hundred. So, you know, I would say just, I would caution against that and really, you know, trust that this Board and downtown have taken a really, really deep dive into those numbers and those projections and the growth that is here to understand, I think from 2021 through now, our elementary numbers are up by 400 students. Middle is down a little bit, but we have a bubble going through, and that was explained in the data sessions from staff. And then our high schools are up 230 students, and that's in a two-year period. So, you know, the growth is here, I see, and I am fortunate enough to sell a lot of homes for people moving here, but the growth is here, people are here, and we need places to comfortably and appropriately serve and educate our students. And so I appreciate staff's work on putting all of this together. I think these three items are items that are needed, but I would caution this and future boards and the public in downtown. We can't just expect to build a school and be done. As, we have to keep a close eye on this every year, on the growth that is here and that's happening. We might be adding a fourth high school next year, but if that growth continues, that might mean that after we build that fourth high school, we might be adding on to Shorando and Millbrook. So it's going to be a constant process, and I hate that we're in this situation right now where we're trying to play catch-up. But we are trying to play catch-up and plan for that growth at the same time, and I appreciate Dr. Hammer's, staff's work in making sure that we have these items prioritized in a way to do that. And I feel confident that these top-three items do help us do that appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Other comments from Board members? All right, I'll share those sentiments. I'm a firm believer, as many of you probably are aware, that the school board's role is oversight and accountability. And I will say that this process, as Mr. Atkins mentioned, beginning with our Building and Grounds Committee meetings, and then the conversations that the full Board, and even conversations jointly with the Board of Supervisors have had, have provided a space where the Board has really dug deeper. And I think you mentioned maybe more so than what the general public might understand. We have provided a lot on Board docs there, but we've asked... But we've asked a lot of questions, a lot of pointed questions, to the point where I feel satisfied that our data is now more accurate and more reflective of the trends of our community. I remember a board of, a meeting in which our committee met, the Building and Grounds Committee, and I was calculating the data that we had that actually showed a decline in high school students. And we see the population going up, whether it be in the southern or northern or all across the county. And we were able to identify maybe why those data sets were a little bit different. And we provided some updated data, not only to this board, but the Board of Supervisors, I think, which reflects a more accurate picture of our county. And I think things like that have led our board to really have some robust discussions around what are our priorities and where can we move forward. And I think whether it be on this board or whether it be downtown, every individual I've talked with has shared that addressing our high school capacity is the number one issue. Now, maybe folks have different ideas on how to do that, and that's fine. And I think we're excited to have those conversations and continue those. But that is the number one issue. And from my perspective, if we look at the data, and I'm someone who was on the fence about what that looked like. When we look at the data, though, that is in the best interest for us. I did want to appreciate and share the appreciation for the Middletown adjustment as well and addressing some questions that we had on the southern end of the county. And I will share that Jordan Springs is one that, I'll be honest, I struggle with as the newest elementary school there. I think there was some room for improvement of when that, in terms of zoning and some of the challenges there when it was originally built and what that looks like. But we are dealing with the hand that we were dealt and in terms of that, and recognize as well that that's an issue for some of the folks at the northern end of the county, so I can deal with that. All right, we have a motion to move forward with the top three CIP projects as recommended by the superintendent. We've had discussions, so we'll move forward with a roll call vote on this one.
Can I verify who the second was on that, please?
I believe there was a chorus of them, but...
Mr. Hester?
Mr. Hester?
He's being Hester together, so.
Thank you.
You can put us both if you want.
A roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes, and that passes. All right, so we have our top three items that will move downtown. As you look into your board packet, you'll notice a list of other items as Dr. Hummer referenced and we've talked about. Wanted to open it up to the board for discussion about how we'd like to deal with those items as well. These are items mainly for our internal use and planning use. We will not be, based upon the last action of the board, we won't be sending these downtown, but more of a kind of a benchmark component here. So, Dr. Hummer, am I correct in understanding that we are free to kind of rank these or take the recommendation or there potentially could be no action? Can you elaborate on that for us?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I would say it can go either way. We could just continue to monitor these items and then bring them up next year if we have a lot of conversations about what should be on this list or not. You could vote on these, but again, next year, the new board can change them. So I would make that recommendation to say, if you guys have any questions about these items, we can open up to that. But I would lean towards, leaning towards, excuse me, that I don't think there needs to be any action on these items. I would, I would definitely agree with that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hummer.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock?
I would agree with that, Dr. Hummer. And I would say maybe, you know, the same as you did with the Armel-Middletown situation, as you're working with the new board and as you're continuing really deep dive into each of these so that you can kind of come forward with what the true priorities are next year as we need to set. The new board, I guess, needs to set those, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. I'll agree with that sentiment if it's the will of the board. I think one, two questions that I did have that can just be taken into consideration as the new board considers it. And I think I shared some of these earlier. But the fifth middle school, when I'm, when I'm looking at the data, and I'm no expert in that, but I see that we potentially would be addressing some of our elementary challenges at Middletown and Jordan Springs if those projects were to move forward. So it does make me question if that should be moved up just a little bit higher. And then I do, I think it's maybe just a philosophical difference on the Early Childhood Center. I know it would be my hope that those components be within the elementary schools themselves as opposed to a separate center, but also understand a different perspective there, too. So just my two cents on that. But I would agree that maybe we can leave those to the future board for further discussion. Have consent to move forward without addressing those specific items? I'm going to take that as consent. Wonderful. All right, next on our agenda is our clerk and deputy clerk designation. As Dr. Hummer mentioned earlier, Mrs. Scott has served in that role, and so I will now pass it off to Dr. Hummer to share his recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had hired Nina DeSantis a couple of months ago, and she has been onboarding with Amy Scott and the other administrative assistants, who, as I've shared with you, have kind of shared the role as clerk. So we're very excited. She has taken on this role and has done a lot of amazing things. She actually set up a majority of this room here today. So we're very excited for her to get started, so she is the recommendation. If you also notice on that list that there are actually three deputy clerks this time around, and the rationale behind that is each of those deputy clerks will be working very closely with Nina because they are our administrative assistants, my two assistant superintendents and myself. So there's a lot of work that goes into that. And we also, I'm a firm believer in succession planning as well. So if Mrs. DeSantis is not available, we have three individuals that can step in and help, help fill in for her when she is out. So with your approval, this does, excuse me, this position does need to get sworn in downtown. So with your approval, we will move forward with that motion, with that action. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. And we've seen the recommendation from Dr. Hummer about the appointment of the clerk and deputy clerks. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move forward, make a motion, move forward with the superintendent's appointments for clerk and deputy clerks.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Or actually do them in a separate motion, each person? Or can they all be one?
It's my understanding that we've done in the past as one, but I'll defer to...
Because it is, it's on one document.
It's on one.
And it was Dr. Hummer's recommendation, the motion as put on the floor is sufficient.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we've got the motion, and I've heard a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. And on behalf of the board, Mrs. Scott, want to thank you for stepping in during a crazy time over the past few, few months. It's been a pleasure to work with you, not only in this capacity, but your other capacity outside of the clerk role, and super thankful and grateful for the work that you've done for not only our board, but me individually. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's give her a round of applause. All right, next on our agenda is the Instruction Committee report. I will turn that over to Mrs. White.
Yes, a meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on December 6, 2023. The meeting was called to order at 7:30 a.m., and a copy of the meeting minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Rittenhour discussed the differences between compulsory attendance and chronic absenteeism, and how Frederick County Public Schools tries to prevent students from becoming chronically absent. Dr. Greathouse gave an overview of the continuous school improvement planning process and the steps in which it identifies strengths and areas of improvement, sets goals of improvement, and achieves those goals. Mr. Strong discussed the CSIP process follow-up at Red Bud Run Elementary School, including the main goals, strategies, and the measures that are being taken. Dr. Putt discussed the CSIP process at Frederick County Middle School, including the needs assessment that is based on the whole child's well-being approach, the seven SMART goals, and the Study Act strategy. Ms. Alton Dorf discussed the CSIP process at Millbrook High School, including the four main goals and the strategies used to overcome weaknesses such as common learning teams and common unit assessment and their secondary approach of a school-wide benchmark. Dr. Angelo thanked the principals and elaborated on the complex process of learning. He also reviewed the all-in funding, which is specifically focused on students in grades three through eight academically and all grades for attendance. He also shared how to locate the school improvement plans on the FCPS websites. Mr. Goodwin shared the 2024-2025 and 2025-2026 calendar recommendations, how the calendar committee reviewed past and present calendars from surrounding jurisdictions and the features of the calendars. Dr. Angelo gave an update on the Perry Weather System and the advantages of this weather monitoring system and alert system to include extreme heat, lightning, rain, snow, ice, and wind. He shared that this will help the school with cancellations and delays as well as athletic activity and events. Dr. William Sandy reviewed the restraint and seclusion policy, FCPS 435P. She also shared the recommendations for the Special Education Advisory Committee annual membership. Dr. Greathouse presented the gifted advisory committee members' recommendation, and the meeting adjourned at 8:33 a.m. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting minutes are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from the board members about the information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on December 6? We do have some action items coming out of this meeting. One is we recommend the full board approve the 2024-2025 and 2025-2026 calendars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar as presented for 2024, 2025, 2025, and 2026.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's main properly seconded to approve the calendars for two years, 2024, 25, and 25, 26. I did want to, and I know it was brought up in instruction. Dr. Hummer, I know we spent a good bit of time talking about this. Can you or Mr. Goodwin maybe share some of the highlights of differences from this just at a very high level and some of the advantages for, that we perceive that staff may have in that?
Absolutely. If Mr. Goodwin can start with that, and then I can add.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you for filling in any gaps that I may have not included. This is a great opportunity for us because, number one, it is a two-year calendar. So it does help us as a division, and especially helps our families as they plan their kind of life calendars and things that they need to do for two years in a row, which is new. It does include new teacher workdays that are added at the front of the year to include new staff. It also has marked teacher workdays that are both for the school to provide professional development and also for the division designated on the calendar. We marked three open house nights for families designated by level. So there's an elementary school night, there's a middle school night, a high school night. That way, families with students at all three levels or just one of those levels can visit each one of their child's schools without all of that being at the same time. There's transition days that are marked on this calendar. There are Division Professional Learning again, and Building Professional Learning Days are marked. So that way, our staff and our leadership know which days professional development are led by the division and which are led by the school. There's unencumbered planning days, which were asked for by the committee. Pre-K and kindergarten registration week is included. We did demarcate the graduations for Dal J. Howard Center on this calendar. James Wood High School, Millbrook High School, Charando High School, and mark those times. So even though those years haven't started, families can plan to invite their loved ones to come and attend and support their family members. We included in there sufficient hours and days to cover and extend beyond the 990 required hours to accommodate for any inclement weather that the division may need to take or any other incidents that may occur. And then we believe this is a great recruitment and retention tool for staff, which is something that our Human Resources Department is really focused on this year. So thank you for the opportunity to present those features. Dr. Hummer, I would see if there are any others you wanted to include.
No, I want to thank the committee and the staff that worked very hard on this. We had a lot of conversations, and Mr. Goodwin took the lead, as well as Dr. Angelo helping out with that as well. We had a lot of representation on this committee with parents and staff, building-level staff, and we feel that this was a very effective calendar that we put together. The other piece that I, that I want to highlight on here because we have received some questions in regards to days off for staff as we want to acknowledge that for the hard work that they're doing. And there are two four-day weekends that were built into here. We have the one in November as well as the one in February. And that was by design. That was intentional to break up the school year. So those were additional days that we had added on to here. And we just want to make sure we also highlight in the beginning of the school year, as Mr. Goodwin mentioned, this is just to emphasize that when you have those back-to-school open house nights, it does take away time for teachers to prepare for the school year. So we were able to afford to add some additional teacher workdays into that so that they can prepare and get ready for the school year as well as that transition day is built into there as well. So that was very appreciated by the staff, and we want to make sure that we start the school year off on the right foot as we did this year. So, Mr. Chair, we're also open to any other questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Mr. Goodwin, appreciate that and for sharing. For those who may not have been privy to that information before, I know that when our board met last year and again in this fall training session, one of the things that we talked about was trying to incentivize the recruitment and retention strategies. And I think this is a great and cost-effective way to do that. So I appreciate the work of the committee and you all in doing it. We have a motion before us, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the 24, 25, and 25, 26 calendars as recommended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. White?
The second recommendation is to recommend the full board to approve the consideration for the Special Education Advisory Committee members, and I do so move.
Second.
All right, there's a motion that's been made and seconded to approve the consideration of the Special Education Advisory Committee members. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The third recommendation to the full board is to approve the consideration of the gifted advisory committee members, and I do so move.
Second.
Motion's main properly seconded to approve the gifted advisory committee members that were recommended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the final recommendation is the full board to approve the meetings, the, approve the minutes from the December 6, 2023 Instruction Committee meeting, and I do so move.
Second.
Motion's main properly seconded to approve the minutes from the December 6 Instruction Committee meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next that takes us to the Student Conduct and Support Committee. Mr. Lake?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Student Conduct and Support Committee met in this building December 7 and had called the meeting to order at 10:35, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the me, during the meeting, the committee went into a closed session to review and discuss individual student matters that involve specific students, particular information contained in their colastic records, including disciplinary matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711, 8.2. After reconvening and certifying the closed session, the committee voted unanimously to uphold the long-term suspension and reinstated Dal J. Howard as an option after reviewing pending reports and through a threat assessment team. Placement will then be referred to the IEP team. The matter does not require any further action by the full board, and the meeting adjourned at 12:30. Additional details regarding the information contained in the committee meeting are included in the minutes in which has already been provided to the school board members. Are there any questions from the school board about information contained in the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held on December 7? Good. Okay, we have one recommendation coming to the board for action. Recommend the full board approve the minutes from the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held in this room December 7, 2023, and I do so move.
Second.
Motion's main properly seconded to approve the minutes of the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held on December 7, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next we have our Personnel Committee.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Lake?
Personnel Committee Meeting in the Melton Wright Room, December 7, 2023, at 4:30 p.m. Copy of the minutes have been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Frakely gave an update on current vacancies, as well as vacancies that have been filled as of November 27, 2023. She also provided an update on substitute teacher positions. Mrs. Frakely explained the staffing standards and in their role in improving efficiency and transparency, as well as meeting the needs of our students while providing the standard on how to staff schools appropriately. She made clear that this is not designated to remove staff, but rather to allocate resources accordingly that this will happen over the course of five years and be contingent on available budget and space in buildings. She also explained how these staffing standards will enhance support for all learners and staff. She showed the differences between the staff standard, the current local standard, and the recommended local standard for elementary school, secondary school, specialty specialists, instructional support, special education, English-language learners, licensed student support personnel, administrative support, operations and safety, as well as administrators. Dr. Hummer thanked Mrs. Frakely and her team for their hard work. He explained that Frederick County Public Schools meets the current state standard, but that these standards have not been adjusted in quite some long time, and that this does not mean that the needs of the students and the staffs are necessarily being met. He also clarified that the estimate, the estimated phased budget planning numbers are high because they include all recommendations being approved within a five-year plan. He too pointed out that this is not meant to remove staff, but to move staff and vacancies to align with the standard. We heard staff answer board member questions at that time. Dr. Hummer thanked current board members and Mr. Hester and Mr. Lake for their service on the Personnel Committee. The meeting adjourned at 5:21 p.m. Additional details required regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to the board members. Are there any questions from the board members pertaining to the Personnel Committee Meeting held here December 7, 2023?
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Do... Go ahead, thank you, Mr. Lake.
Okay. I have two actions coming out. Recommend that the full board approve the staffing standards as referred to, and I do so move.
Second.
Thank you, there's been a motion that's been seconded to approve the staffing standards. I have a few questions about this. I know I've shared some, and I don't know if it'd be the pleasure of the board to just get an overview on it. I've watched the committee meeting, but would love some more detail. I think this is a pretty significant thing to look at, and thank you, Dr. Hummer.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to continue to elaborate on this. And as you mentioned, this is, this is big. This is something that is, again, going to continue to move us forward and think of the three- to five-year projections, as well as moving us forward in regards to meeting the needs of our students. I also want to make sure that we understand that this is just a tool. This is a tool that's going to guide our budget process so that it will move any subjectivity in regards to adding positions into our schools. And we will work very closely with our principals, we'll work very closely with our staff, but we need to have a starting point in regards to where are we currently at with the number of students in each of our schools so that we are guiding these standards by the needs in each of our schools. These are differentiated standards, so they are not just based on the number of students in a building, they're number of students with each of their unique needs. So for example, at elementary school, we break that down by grade level, and each of those standards guides that. We also have students with disabilities, English-language learners. And as I've mentioned to you all, I call this a soft approval of these standards because we cannot commit future boards to any future commitments to budget, because this is going to be contingent on budget, as you saw in the one slide, where if we did move forward with each of these items, it would be a significant amount of money in order to meet these standards in regards to increasing the level of staffing in each of our buildings. So if you all do approve this this evening, I want to make sure that we are very clear that it's not we're moving forward with everything that I have recommended for FY '25. What I'm recommending is that we take a look at positions that are in front of our students and that we continue to work on what those positions are so that when we do come forward in January with a proposal, it's going to be based on a standard. It's not going to be based on subjective information, it's going to be based on this standard. And for any items that go above that standard, there will be a rationale and an explanation that we will seek from our principals, and we will be working with them very closely, because there probably is some reasons as to why we go above these standards in some of our schools, and we want to make sure that we have a rationale for that and we have an explanation as to why we're adding these positions. Another reason too, Mr. Chair, that I want to mention is, and I've used this scenario in every explanation of these staffing standards, is it will also allow us to add the positions that are needed at each of our buildings. Prime example of this is Sherrando. We currently have the same number of custodial staff in each of our high schools when Sherrando has 300 more students than our other high schools. And there's other examples of that as well. So if we're able to commit to that, to again, meet the needs of the building, meet the needs of the students, and that we can add the staff that will help us move us forward and also will be able to inform you in regards to any sort of budgetary proposals that will be coming forward before you in next month and moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Any questions for Dr. Hummer? I know this was discussed in committee. Mr. Atkins?
Not a question, just a comment. I appreciate the standards. I know we've had lengthy conversations about this. You know, it seems that in the past, there's been principals that can advocate for their schools a little bit better than other principals, and they end up with a higher number of teachers, you know? Well, that disenfranchises some of the other students at other schools. So this gives us a standard to go off of. One, we can have those clear-cut numbers and transparency for our budget and let the actual constituents know where money's going, right? It's based on a certain number. Then, we're also advocating for our students in this manner because we are providing them with the correct number of teachers. Like Dr. Hummer said, custodial staff, maintenance staff, cafeteria workers, everything, right? So it puts us all at a great standard so we all know where we're going and we can move forward in a direction without just kind of having to guess at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Other comments from board members? Mr. Comstock?
Mr. Chairman? Sorry, trying to get back to it, I lost it. I really want to thank Dr. Hummer and his staff again. I know it's kind of been the theme, but I want to thank you for your commitment to really looking into this and figuring out, okay, how can we best serve our students? And what are our true needs to be able to really best serve our students? I see that in everything that you do, and I appreciate that. I just want, I guess, maybe a couple of questions for clarity.
Please.
This is a, our staffing standards are regulations, correct, not policies. So that's something within your purview to be able to set. And you're just kind of bringing us in on this and keeping us in the loop.
Correct, as I mentioned, Mr. Comstock, if I can add more to that. So, correct, so there was a regulation that was passed quite some time ago to guide the budget process, but unfortunately, that wasn't being followed for whatever reason, because we do have some classrooms that are above that standard. So this, these standards would replace that regulation, and then we would continue to have conversations to adjust as, as we see fit.
Okay, and thank you for that. And then, I guess, I don't want to say it's a concern, but maybe it's a concern. These new standards are very different in a lot of ways from, from our current practice and from the number of staff that are currently in our buildings. If we were to move forward and tomorrow say, yes, we're going to try to make it such that we are in compliance with these new staffing standards, there would be a very hefty price tag to be able to do that. So I see kind of how you phased it out, and I appreciate that. I wonder, I know the committee's looked at this, I know you and your staff have looked at this. I wonder if it's, I wonder if it might be the type of thing that as budget seasons happen, you make one a priority and change the regulation at that time? Maybe just a suggestion from me, versus kind of adopting all of them now as the new standards. Understanding that, you know, it is something we want to work towards, and there is rationale behind this, and I'm not arguing that, that the standards are not right or not needed. But I wonder, I do worry about maybe putting something out there as a regulation of something that we want if we're not there yet. So maybe kind of phasing it in, into your regulations as you add these items into your budget, as you've kind of timelines them out. So, you know, next year in the fiscal budget 25, when you're working on that and you have those positions in there, then changing the regulation to go along with it at that time. Maybe just a recommendation or thought, I don't know if you have any feedback on that.
I do, yeah. So to be clear, the regulation, if you all approve this, is going away. So the regulation is no longer going to be in place because, again, these staffing standards are going to replace that. And this is what's going to guide us moving forward. So any positions that are coming before you has to abide by these standards. So we're not going to have positions that are randomly coming forward, and where did these positions come from? It's going to be based on the standard. And then, in addition to that, to avoid any sort of concern at the building level, if there is an exception to these standards, which there's going to be, because we have unique needs in each of our buildings, and we give a lot of deference to our principals, we have some here in the audience today, that if they say, I need these positions because of A, B, and C and its objective data, they are going to get those additional positions, and we will be able to explain those to you. Secondly, keep in mind that we also have a state standard that we still must follow. So if we have any positions that we need to add because we are above the state standard, we will make that as, when we make that proposal to you. We will say, these are the positions according to our local standard, but these are the positions that we need to add to the state standard, which we need to stay in compliance with. So we're going to delineate those. Hopefully, we don't have any of those where we're out of compliance with the state standard. That's mainly going to be special education, English-language learners, our early, early young learners in K through 3. So those will be the ones where we'll have to pay extra attention to, but the staffing standard is what's going to guide us moving forward. And then you're, so you're right, I think we're saying semantics where, keep in mind, we can't commit any board to this. I can't even commit you guys to this, because after we, all the dust settles with the, with the governor's budget and downtown, it might be, sorry, we want to live towards this, but we can only add two positions because of everything else we want to add. So keep that in mind, this is just a, you're approving, I think to help everyone understand, you're approving that we're going to utilize this tool to guide our decisions moving forward with budget, and you're absolutely right. It's, the ratios are potentially are going to change every year. That's why I don't want to make any policy or regulation, because it can adjust, and the board's going to have to adopt that so that we are utilizing that tool moving forward. So hopefully that helps.
I think so, forgive my density. Just for clarity, the current 409 RA where we have, it's a very limited list of what those ratios are.
Correct.
The motion that's coming forward here is to nix that?
Correct, and this would replace it.
This would be published?
But not as, correct, but not as a replacement of the regulation, as a replacement of our tool moving forward with how we are filling positions and staffing our schools.
It's a guide.
So would it, I feel like something is necessary there as a regulation, would there be no regulation, or would this become a regulation?
So this, we don't necessarily need a regulation. We, so here's the other piece too. If the pleasure of the board is for me to make this as a regulation, we can. I wouldn't advise that, but if you want me to do that, we can. The regulation would go away because this is going to replace that. So this is going to be a motion and an approval by the board, if you approve it, pleasure of the board, and we will utilize this tool moving forward. Because you all will approve this, and it is also part of our budget priorities as well that we will consider this moving forward. So there's no need for a regulation. A regulation is just the implementation of a policy, but there was no need for that because the regulation wasn't being followed to begin with.
It's a standard and a measuring tool.
Correct.
I think the regulation was being followed, if you, you know, maybe not the ratios completely, but there's some, you know. I think it's necessary to, to have something out there. I don't know, I'm kind of torn on this one, I'm not sure. I understand, I agree with the new staffing standards, I agree with moving forward as those is our goal, but I don't necessarily agree with just nixing that regulation. I think we do have something, need to have something out there that kind of shows our commitment to, to class sizes specifically. Not everything in your new staffing standard, but our commitment to at least meeting SOQs and exceeding them and having, you know, better than that as our class sizes. So I would not be in favor of totally nixing 409 RA, but maybe tweaking it a little bit and understanding that we're moving towards this staffing standard, but keeping something out there for the public to know, hey, this is what we do, this is our commitment to you and to how we serve your students.
So, so Mr. Chair, if I can respond to that, Mr. Comstock, I think that that's a great idea. And if you all approve this standard, because in that standard, right now, it's just general education classrooms. It's just K-5, middle school and high school. So if you all approve this standard, then we would just go ahead and I would adjust that regulation, and then we can keep that out there. I, I don't, there's nothing wrong with that, there's no harm in that. The only reason that I mentioned that we would essentially be utilizing this and not the regulation, I don't want there to be confusion, but you're right, that regulation is just general education teachers, so I think it doesn't hurt to have both of those out there. And we could just make that adjustment in regards to what we have on here.
Thank you, sir, just my thoughts, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but. And then I had a couple of other questions about some of those. Okay, so in here, one of the slides references cap class sizes in K through 12. So right now, it's just kind of a guideline, we try to get to it, it's typically an average. Yes, we, we hit this number on average, it might be higher here, it might be lower here. So as part of your staffing standard and plan, would we be trying to, maybe not tomorrow, but at some point implement a cap on, you know, this is what we're committed to and we're not going to?
Yes, yes, so when we're taking a look at these standards, we have to take a look at the averages to know how many we currently have. But moving forward, I want us to avoid any situations that would go over those caps, because again, that is what's going to impact the needs of the students in those classes. So this is going to be a lot of work with our principals to make sure that we are keeping an eye on what those caps look like in each of those classes. Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. You might think of a few when I ask something. I, this is something, and Dr. Hummer, I think you know this, I'm struggling with this one simply because I've asked, I've heard in your 100-day plan initially, during the review, staffing standards, and I'm in support of that. And I'll explain some of the reason why, and I think you alluded to some of these. It will help us, as opposed to maybe what it might seem like to some people throwing darts at a wall of different staffing positions. This will help kind of provide the North Star on what that looks like, as well as will help with some of the differences of schools that I think you and I have talked about, others on the board have talked about as well, and that we've seen. You mentioned Sherrando being one, and kind of different principals being able to, you know, support their staff and have conversations to try to advocate for their staff. I think that creates some challenges with individual staff members who feel like one school might have some different resources than others. So I think from that perspective and from a perspective of budgeting and being able to explain to the board supervisors, here's the rationale for what our intent is, and the long-term strategic priorities of the division, that's super helpful. My only concern is kind of the long term, after all of us are gone, what that might look like from a budgeting conversation perspective. I don't want this, I think we all recognize this as aspirational and a place that we want to get to. I don't want this to get to a place where we are using this as a token to go downtown and, you know, create some turmoil based upon what our hope is in terms of these standards. And what I mean by that is I think some of them are, obviously, our goal is to get to fulfilling many of these, but some of them are a priority compared to what other priorities of the division might be. So I have some hesitation in that regard, but I do think holistically, you know, if we can see that there's some advantage to, you know, after we've met some of these standards, is there an advantage on scores? Is there an advantage on the culture in our workplace, retention based upon some of these being filled? I think there's some things that we could measure there. So I'm inclined to support it, but with, just with that cautionary note for future boards to kind of keep account of that to ensure that it's not becoming a piece that's kind of, you know, oh, we have to do this because of the staffing standard. I think things may change over time that necessitate the board to make just-in-time decisions. And I've encouraged future boards to do that and hope that makes sense.
It makes, can I add something to that?
Sure, Dr. Hummer.
Mr. Chairman, because I totally understand what you're saying, so I'm going to go back to how I answered, Mr. Comstock is. This is a tool to meet the needs of our students. This is, this is not a tool that is going to be weaponized, this is not a tool that is going to make things less transparent. So if we do have positions that come before you and come before folks downtown, we're going to delineate between, as I mentioned to Mr. Comstock, these are the positions that we are required by the state, and we don't have much argument with those positions, especially when it comes to regulations, state code and such. And then these are the positions that we're looking at adding because of the state-local standards. So there's a little bit more flexibility there of adding those positions, so I want to make sure we continue to delineate those, but we also don't diminish the fact that this was designed to meet the needs of our students, but we can delineate that moving forward so everybody understands those positions. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Atkins?
Dr. Hummer, you know, being that we will be, three of us will be moving to the next board, I would like to see, to Mr. Monk's point, that, that tracking, you know? Like, what's the cost-benefit analysis of it? You know, if we're putting in this much, you know, to follow these staffing standards, you know, how are our S.O.L. scores going up? How are? How are, just making it trackable, you know? That way, when we do go downtown with that, we do show that we're getting bang for our buck when we do this, you know, we're showing the community members because if it's not working, why do it, you know? But yeah, that way we have measurable success.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
One more thing, then I'll be done.
Mr. I knew. Sandy.
No, I think, you know, like Dr. Hammer said, it'll be up to new boards, right? So every year when we the budget comes before us, when there are new positions listed in there, staff goes to great lengths to explain the benefit of those positions and how they'll be used and, you know, that kind of thing. So I think that kind of happens naturally. So there'll be that check happening at that point that future boards will be able to engage in conversations with Dr. Hammer and his staff to understand those positions before pushing a budget forward. So I appreciate the work in this and I appreciate that the focus on this is how do we best serve our students. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And as I said, I know we've had a lot of conversations about this. I think it's a big deal, but want to make sure it still centers on students. At the end of the day, I'm excited about having a standard that we, number one, have some conversations around that we've already had. It's been through a lot of talks, but then also that we can share with other stakeholders, whether that be downtown or others in our community of rationale for budget decisions. All right, so we have a motion before us. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, the last action coming out of the committee meeting was to recommend to the full board, approve the minutes of the personnel committee meeting held on December 7th, 2023, and I do so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve the minutes of the personnel committee meeting held on December 7th, 2023. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the finance committee, Mr. Hester.
Yes, the finance committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on December 7th, 2023. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson reviewed the tentative fiscal year 2025 budget developmental calendar, explaining important fiscal dates. Dr. Williams Sandy explained that the comprehensive coordinated early learning intervention services supports students who are at risk behaviorally and in classrooms, provides license, clinical social workers, offers services to families and services, provide provides professional learning to staff. Services will be provided by Effective School Solutions LLC in the amount of $267,000. Mrs. Camery reviewed the contract for painting services at Shorando High School. Services will be from Elite Link LLC in the amount of $247,000. Mrs. Camery reviewed the contract award for Jameswood Middle School Kitchen Improvements and Services will be from Keller Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $759,600. Mrs. Camery also reviewed the contract award for the building automation system replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, as well as a contract award for the building automation system replacement at Dal J. Howard Center. Services for both schools will be from Simons and Industry. The amount for Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School is $311,700 and the amount for Dal J. Howard Center is $144,700. Dr. Hammer thanked Mr. Comstock for a service on the finance committee. The meeting adjourned at 5:51 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the personnel committee meeting, at the finance committee meeting held on December 7th? If not, we do have several action items that came out of this meeting. First is to recommend the full board approve the fiscal year 2025 budget development calendar and I so move.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I mention something really quick?
Sure, Dr. Hammer.
So after the finance committee meeting, there actually was a change that was out of our control. The governor's budget biennium was shifted and moved to December 20th. So I just want to make sure that the board is fully informed when you vote on this that that was there was a shift. So the original calendar we presented, there was there was a change in that date. So just in case you look and you're like, why was this changed? That was why.
Will that be updated in the minutes?
It's there's a current update on board docs that I see now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The motion and second still stand with that adjustment that's in board doc. Perfect. Wonderful. There's a motion and second before us. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the full board approve the contract award to Effective School Solutions LLC for the comprehensive coordinated early intervening services in the amount of $267,000. And so I move.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve the contract award of Effective School Solutions for comprehensive coordinated early learning intervention services in the amount that Mr. Hester mentioned. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lake.
A lot of money here. Roll call.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Recommend the full board approve the contract award to Elite Link LLC for painting services for Shorando High School in the amount of $247,000. And I so move.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve the contract for Elite Link LLC for painting services for Shorando High School in the amount of $247,000. Any discussion? I assume, Mr. Lake, you'd like the same roll call?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk.
All right, and I apologize. I have Mr. Hester is the making the motion and Mr. Atkins seconded. Thank you. All right, Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I recommend full board approve the contract award to Keller Brothers Incorporated for the Jameswood Middle School Kitchen Improvements in the amount of $759,600. And I so move.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to award a contract to Keller Brothers Incorporated for the Jameswood Middle School Kitchen Improvements Project in the amount of $759,000. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins.
Well, just correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this came to us during building of grounds as well, and there is money attached that that's coming in, correct? Are we on the hook for the whole?
So I'm happy to defer. It's my understanding that it's coming from the school nutrition fund, which is a separate account, but Ms. Camery.
Yes, it's part of their spin-down plan and that was presented, the buildings and grounds on October the 9th.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's my memory serves, this is well under budget. I thought it was one, okay. Yeah, I think we had budgeted a considerable amount more. I visited during lunch and had some lunch there a couple of months ago and in support of this project. So any further discussion? All right, all in favor, well, Mr. Lake, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes. Motion carries.
Recommend the full board approve the contract award to Simons Industry for the building automation system replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School in the amount of $311,700. I so move.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve an award contract to Siemens Industry for building automation services or system replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary in the amount of $311,700. Is there any discussion? Dr. Hammer, just want to ask a quick question. I know we've had some conversations just individually around building automation system. Is this in line with that and your plan to move forward with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this actually came up in the committee meeting. I want to make sure that we were informing you. We actually had to back out of two projects because we want to make sure that we align with all of our our BAS systems together and have one system across the school division. So that's something that we're working towards. So we are going to move forward with the other two at a later date, but these are the two that we want to move forward with a one program for the whole school division. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me backtrack. Mr. Lake, you got me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I know what the outcome will be though, but Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes. Motion carries.
Recommend the full board approve the contract award to Simons Industry for the building automation system replacement at Dal J. Howard Center in the amount of $144,700. I so move.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve a contract award to Siemens Industry for the building automation system replacement at Dal J. Howard Center in the amount of $144,700. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock.
We previously adjusted the amount with that's within the superintendent's purview to, I believe, $200,000. Does this need to come? I mean, it's here, so I'm happy to vote for it, but does this item need to come before us?
No, it's under the 200 limit, but I think Dr. Hammer wanted anything that because it was Siemens and because it was a building automation, there's questions about that that we're bringing them all forward.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Dr. Hammer, thank you.
I concur with the appreciation there. I doesn't hurt, so. With that, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes.
All right.
And motion carries.
And lastly, recommend full board approval of the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on December 7th, 2023. And I so move.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve the minutes of the finance committee meeting held on December 7th, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have approved minutes. All right, the next item on our agenda is board member comments. Are there any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lake.
On my way out the door, I have a few words. First of all, I want to recognize Charlie Marple had a wonderful turnout Saturday night at Indian Hollow Elementary School. If you thought the western end of the county was under attack, it was just because of all the police and fire and rescue that were turning out to support Charlie. So supporting Charlie. So I think to go out, I just want to say thank you to all the staff. And it's all the staff and it's been since 2012, 12 years and different staff along the way, a lot of numbers of people because there's been such high turnover in the school division. I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I would say between 40 and 50% of the employees that are here today probably weren't here when I started on the school board, January of 2012. And so when I see new people, I approach them, I ask them, I introduce myself and I ask them about their job, even though I may know what their job is and who did it before, I just ask them about their job, how they like working here, and then I ask them to explain their job to me. And that's made me a better school board member to understand what the people out there are, what they think their job is. And again, with the high turnover, I get I get a lot of input from a lot of people. I want to tell the staff, I appreciate the patience that everybody's given me. I've never, I've never been turned down. I've never met a rude staff employee. I've never had anybody refuse to answer a question for me. Sometimes a second and third time when I come back and ask the question if I didn't understand something, but always patient and always helpful and willingness to help I just, the staff is just good to deal with. They're wonderful to deal with and it doesn't matter who it might be, it, you know, all the, all the different classifications of staff. I mean, you could start, you know, any one of them with school bus drivers or SOQ people or the custodial staff or food services or or in this building, people who are department heads and and just top to bottom, a very cooperative attitude and very cooperative bunch of people all over the years. And, you know, when you get that, you trust the staff, you learn to trust them. When they will not run away from you or when they will give you an answer that you know is just total nonsense, you learn to trust the staff and then you trust their judgment and you trust that they're doing the right thing and doing the right thing for the kids of Frederick County. I hope I never step overstep my bounds with staff. If I did, I apologize. I didn't always call ahead of time and make an appointment, which is sort of the, sort of the code, sort of the standard is what we're supposed to do because they have full-time jobs rather than, you know, entertain a, a school board member. But if I ever overstepped, I'm sorry, but I was never made to feel like I overstepped. And so far, you know, a couple of times, I probably walked in a few too many times on a few too many people, but somehow it all worked out. So I'm appreciative of that. I think the staff during the pandemic was a special group of people. No one had the answers during the pandemic. A lot of people think they did, but no one did. And all we did was tell our staff, go prepare your schoolrooms, push the desks six feet apart and then teach kids every other day. Because if you called during the pandemic, we had, we had two different schedules. We had the Monday, Thursday schedule and the Tuesday, Friday schedule. And then Wednesday was like a catch-up day where nobody was actually in school unless they needed a lot of extra help. So that's what we asked our, our staff to do then. And by the way, while they're doing all that, we asked them to keep everybody safe. And keeping everybody safe, they came up with this phrase of mask police and that was, that was, that was actually, you know, it worked out okay. You know what? The kids were okay. The kids were okay with it. The kids were okay with it. It was the parents that had the issues with all the masks. But anyway, the staff during the pandemic, they were just out of this world good, and I couldn't have been more proud of them. At the state, my statement about staff goes a little bit beyond Frederick County because at the state level, I'm involved at the state level with VSPA in Charlottesville. Lady named, the executive director is Gina Patterson, but she and her staff have been outstanding and very patient with me and have taken me into the executive board there, and that has made me a better school board member. Learning at the upper level about what goes on at the state level, I have heard, I've heard the state superintendent, I've heard VHSL, I heard Scott Brayban, Scott Brayban. He was the superintendent at Fairfax. Lisa Coons, who's the state superintendent, I've heard her twice. And I have my last board meeting there this coming Friday at noon, and I'm really looking forward to that. There's a, the government relations person that is, works for VSPA is named JT Kessler, and I've got a good, close relationship with him, of staying in communications constantly. He is the Capitol Hill guy for Richmond. He is always in the building, he knows all 140 legislators, he attends all the cabinet meetings, and he is an unbelievable individual to talk to if you want to know what's going on in the middle of Richmond. And my relationship with him, I will dearly, dearly miss. Him and his cohort, Stacy Haney, she is a brilliant lawyer, has been involved with VSPA for the entire time that I've been on the board, for 12 years, and she is just one smart lady that knows the law, knows education law, and can talk to all the cases that are going on around the state and what's going on and what's going right. So, and then I'll close with saying, I just got to give a shout out to finance here, down the hall, all nine of them. They're just, I mean, they're the best. Everybody knows, I'm a budget guy. I mean, you know, that's what I do. And finance is just, they're the best. They're the best at their job, and that's not me saying that, State of Virginia says that. State of Virginia says that with awards every year, I don't know how many years in a row now the finance group has gotten the award from the State of Virginia, just on reporting, just on reporting, is there anything askew, is there anything missing, is there anything out of place? No. The awards keep coming, audits, twice a year, audits. They welcome the auditors, they open the doors, they say, come on in, see what you can find, because that would make them better. They pass every audit with no sweat. So, Mrs. Camery, to you and Mrs. Anderson and your staff, you're just absolutely the best. And that's Mike, out for the last time.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Other board member comments?
Yeah, we got a couple.
Mr. Hester?
Um, it's hard to follow up, Mike Lake. I want to say thank you, Mike. You know, we're both going off the board. I'm gonna miss working with you terribly on this school board. You've done an awesome job, and your knowledge and expertise as a school board member has helped each and every one of us that is sitting up here right now, and I just want to thank you. You're the most tenured, and it's been an absolute pleasure. When I ran four years ago, I, you know, you guys have heard me say, I ran because I wanted to make a difference in our school system, and I wholeheartedly believe that we do have one of the best school systems in the state of Virginia. You know, yes, we've gone through some hard times over the past four years. I mean, more than half of us up here, you know, have been, all we've known is COVID. You know, we started January and, what was it, February? I don't know.
March, March 13.
March, okay. And so, all we've known is COVID. We haven't always agreed up here. I know I've ruffled feathers, but it's because of my love of this school system. You know, I truly love this school system. Like Mike Lake said, we've got great staff, great teachers, and it's those folks that make a difference day to day. You know, I have learned, you know, I went through FCPS 101, and that was my eye-opener. I mean, I spent nine, 10 months or whatever going through every month, and, you know, a lot of people believe that, you know, school is just putting your kid on the bus, going to school, being in class, getting back on the bus, coming home, and there's so much more that goes into it. And I can't thank our school system enough for what you guys do day in and day out. The public does not see what you guys do to make our awesome school system run. Dr. Hummer, you've done a great job, and I look forward to seeing what you've got in store down the road. Mr. Goodwin, glad to have you onboard and leading. Dr. Angelo, I can't say enough about you, man. Go Caps, first of all, okay? But I have the utmost respect for you, what you've done with this school system, how you lead the education of our students, and I just want to personally thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you've done and will continue to do. Patty, I got to tell you, you've heard me joke about it, but I think I failed the budget process during FCPS 101. You kindly remind me of that. I think we've done a pretty darn good job over the past four years, and I really appreciate you and your staff and Kristen and all the hard work that goes into the finance side and making this school system run on a day-to-day basis. So anyways, I really appreciate the community, and, you know, my only ask, my only ask is don't allow, you know, a gray cloud to cover up all the good stuff we've got going on in this school system. Put your personal feelings aside and really think about what it is that this school system does. We can agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, it's about the kids. It's truly about the kids. Don't use your children as pawns, as we've seen over the past four years. Some parents do. We have so much good going on in this school system. Put the feelings aside and let's come together for the sole purpose of providing the best education possible for the children of Frederick County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Other board member comments?
Yes, that's me.
You guys want to go first?
Mr. Comstock?
Mr. Chairman, it's kind of bittersweet, I think, right now. I naively, when running for the school board, you know, thought it would, I would be helping change the future of Frederick County, and it would be a pretty minimal time commitment, and it just so happened that COVID happened after that. And I think that the past four years have probably been more intense than many people serving on other boards would have expected, but so many good things have happened in those four years. There've been some really trying times, there've been some really challenging times, there've been some hurt feelings, there've been some anger, there's been a lot that's happened that we've observed in this very room even, but there's been so many good things happening, and I'm just so proud to have been a part of this board and to have served alongside all of you. We each bring unique perspectives, we each bring, you know, different backgrounds and experiences and perspectives of things, and, you know, we don't always see eye to eye, for sure, we've seen that before, but I think what I have seen this board is, you know, we've evolved into a board that is having healthy conversations and making sure that we bring it back around every time to students. And I just hope that that continues with this board and with the public. We appreciate the public being involved, we appreciate downtown being involved in the open communication, and there's so many good things going on, and I'm just glad to have been a part of it. So, for those of you continuing and for the public who's continuing to come to meetings and for everyone fighting the good fight, keep showing up, but keep involved, stay involved, and just always bring it back to the classroom and the kids and how everything that we do impacts them. If you keep that as the focus, you can't go wrong. And so, super glad that we have brought on Dr. Hummer. Thank you for your leadership. I'm excited to see how Frederick County continues to evolve and improve, and thank you for your staff. You've brought on some great people, and I'm enjoying watching some things unfold. I'm just enjoying what's happening in this division, and I'm proud of what's happening here. I think I've said thank you to all the board members, but thank you, Mr. Lake. You are, you know, you are one of those guys who's always involved, always digging, always trying to find answers, always educating yourself, and so you've been a fantastic role model for this board and especially for new board members and for me, on how to really plug in and learn and be educated and show up in a way that you can be involved and not just show up, to show up and say whatever you feel like saying. So, thanks for being a good role model for us. Thank you for, Mr. Hester, for some of the, you know, we've, I think we see eye to eye a lot, there've been some times that we haven't, and that's okay, but I appreciate that you are always, I know this in my heart, focused on the kids and making sure that they have the best education possible, so I appreciate your commitment to that, even though our avenues of getting there may have differed from time to time. And Mr. Monk, thank you for, thank you for your leadership on this board and for your, as Dr. Hummer said before, unwavering commitment to digging deeper, you know, not just kind of taking things, not just taking the status quo, but helping us as a board and staff dig deeper and really reflect on what we're doing, because I truly believe that's the only way we can evolve and improve, is if we're reflecting on what we're doing and making sure that we're doing what is best for kids. And so, I would encourage staff to keep doing that as well. And thank you to all of the teachers, bus drivers, all the people that show up and do the face-to-face work every day. What you do is so important, and we wouldn't have the impact as a school division that we have without you, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. All right, Ms. White, Mr. Atkins, do you want to go first?
All right, so I'd like to first start off by congratulating the students that we had earlier from the FFA, volleyball over at James Woods, and cheerleading. There's also, I don't know if everybody here got to go, but there was also some students who went above and beyond on the school bus, you know, to respond to emergency situations, those types of leaders that, we won these communities, you know, it's great to see that, you know, they take charge, take action, take responsibility. It's awesome, you know, we're crafting, you know, great members of society. Next, also wanted to congratulate Mr. Brian Davis for his appointment as the facilities director. And then also, Ms. Amy Scott, always keeping us straight up here. We appreciate you. I don't know how you did, you know, that big of a workload and, you know, keeping us always on point, keeping us always informed and just kept it going. Mr. Santis, welcome, I guess officially now, right? But I guess you just got to get sworn in, but I look forward to working with you. You're already, you know, really putting forth a lot of effort, so thank you. And then to the students that were speaking earlier, I really do think the recycling thing is something we can look at. I think that that's low-hanging fruit. I mean, we can definitely look into that and see, you know, how we can tackle that. I do like the commitment from the students, though. Ms. Lasik, Vanessa Lasik?
Lonziak.
Lonziak. She was saying, you know, that they wanted to take accountability, you know, and they had some good ideas on different student support clubs that could do that, they're just not passing the buck, they're coming up with solutions. And then Ms. Powers, I know she was talking about James Woods and the concerns for the stage, dressing rooms, and classroom settings for the art program. That is, not trying to pass the buck, that is something that was approved on prior boards, however, it is something we can take a look at, and I do apologize on my end for not getting back with her. And then, next, to the outgoing board members, it's, you know, been a pleasure, really. I know we haven't always agreed eye to eye on a lot of things, but look at how far we've all come, you know? We've been through a lot, we've been, you know, I came in tail end of the pandemic, but, you know, we've been, I'm counting four superintendents that we've been through. You know, so we've had two interim and then two full-time. We've done a lot to make, to bridge that gap between the school board and the board of supervisors. We've done a lot of healing within the community, got a lot of the trust back, you know, by being transparent. We've expanded our CTE programs. We're, since I've been on the board, we've won, it's not a board thing, but we've won two state championships in volleyball. You know, and, I mean, we just keep pushing forward, right? We're recovering from the pandemic, and we're going to keep pushing forward to get our academic skills up. We're making measurable and trackable metrics on that. So, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for being that torch, you know, carrying that and lighting the way, you know, when us three came on, we leaned on you guys pretty hard, so, especially, you know, Mr. Lake, always being there at different meetings, different games. He's always telling us about the different plays he's going to, recitals, everything, you know, it's, you know, it does show a lot of character to do that, it's a lot of time commitment. Mr. Comstock, always, always, always thinking about that compassion. We were sitting in the new school board member orientation the other day, and he brought up, take it, always take it back to being in that classroom, looking through the eyes of that student and how to, you know, what their experience will be, and craft your decisions around that. So I thought that was something I'm going to keep with me, I appreciate it. Mr. Hester, we've not always agreed, but, you know, I wish you the best on your future endeavors, and I think that, you know, you have, in your own way, done what you can to, you know, help further education around here, and that's very commendable. Mr. Monk, wow, hands down, awesome leadership skills. You've kept us together even when we're all arguing, but, you know, but actually getting in there and doing the big work, you know, coming in, coordinating with people to help find Dr. Hummer. I know there was a lot of the board effort, but realistically, you took point on that, you know, and I appreciate that. I see it as something that's furthered our schools along, so thank you to you all. I really appreciate everything you guys have done and hope to do you guys proud in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Ms. White?
Trying to be brief, I don't know that there's much that hasn't already been said. Mr. Lake, I have so much enjoyed sitting beside you for two years. I think that you have such a wealth of knowledge and historical things that have happened in the county, and I hope to continue to lean on you even though you're going out. Your support for the students and always being present at student events is inspirational. You never seem to tire of supporting our students, and I think that that is just the best thing. I will miss you greatly. Mr. Comstock, you are so thoughtful and intentional and so kind, and I think that's in such short supply. You never seem to see the glass as less than half-full, and I think that that is such an admirable trait. I will, I will miss serving with you. Mr. Monk, you are so deliberate, you have been a great leader. You had better make sure that you do your homework if you're going to talk to Mr. Monk, because you can rest assured that his will already be done, and you're always prepared. Greenwood, they say be ready, be responsible, be respectful, and you display those qualities. Mr. Hester, you are so passionate, and you always carry the needs and the well-being of the students and the educators and the buildings of this county in your heart, and I admire your passion, and it's been a pleasure serving with you. I know that we have not seen the last of these amazing members, because I know that their voices will be ever-present and they will continue to advocate for our students, so it has been a pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. White. All right, I...
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Martin.
Past Ms. Martin's bedtime.
I just told Dr. Hummer I need to go home.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
I have enjoyed being with, meeting you people, and all men, but, and Ellen, of course, but the ones that are leaving and learning your individual quirks and personalities and getting to know the school system, because you all brought something different to the plate, and most of it was very good. Some of it I kind of chewed on. But it's been a pleasure knowing you, and I know you're going to still be involved, and I know how much you do care for the students, and the community should appreciate all of you, because the deep-heartedness that you care for each child is well-seen, and that's an important function in being a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Appreciate that. I'll try to be brief. I know folks want to get out of here, and we got to get Ms. Martin home, according to Mr. Comstock, so. Want to thank the folks of the Back Creek District who allowed me the honor and privilege of serving in this role. Hope that I have done that district proud and that they have provided some good constituent services to them over the years. I am very thankful for the work that we've done over the past four years, not only with this board, but other members that I've been blessed to work with. As you all have mentioned, I like to dig in sometimes, which I know can be fun and interesting along the way, but I'm appreciative of the work that we've done to expand our CTE programs, and Dr. Angel, I think you're going to hear that in your sleep, me talking about CTE, and I appreciate the work we've done to work in safety and security with RROs and the support of Lenny and the Sheriff's Office downtown and First Lieutenant Cornwell and Sergeant Mitchell and their entire team's work. Just appreciative of the work that goes into that. And when I ran, safety and security was a big thing at the forefront of a lot of people's minds, and I can leave this board knowing that we have done some good work in that realm as well. And the transparency component, I think, I don't think there's things to hide, and we've done a good job as a board and as a staff to working to expand some of those things with board docs and town halls and really being open to conversations with others. with board docs and town halls and really being open to conversations with others and ensuring that parents have the opportunity to look at materials and have conversations about curriculum and are engaged in their students' education. And that relationship with the board of supervisors. I know, Dr. Hummer, we've asked you to work it overtime over the past few months to try to help get this process set up. And I think, looking on this end of that planning, that was all for the good, and it's going to make us better moving forward. I also think from a culture perspective, I talked a lot about culture, and I'm so thankful for some of the challenges that we've had over the years to get us to the place that we are now. I think that Frederick County Public Schools is a great place to work and to have your students engaged in and to be a school board member of. And I'm so appreciative of the work that this board and staff and others have done to continue in those efforts. And we've got challenges, and like capacity, which we talked about, and discipline and student behavior, and we're continuing the culture thing, and, but I think we have done some tremendous work, given some of the challenges that we've had. And I'm super appreciative of the work of members of this board, as well as the staff. Do want to thank you, Mr. Comstock. I know that we have always, not always, agreed on every issue, and that's been a good thing. I think conversations with you, whether it be in public at the diocese or private, have been enlightening for me, and hopefully I've enlightened you a little bit as well along the way. But appreciative of the work that I think we've done in trying to get our community and our board in a place where we can move forward over these next few years. And I leave here, and I hope you do the same, knowing that we have set up those that are following us for great success down the road. Want to thank you, Dr. Hummer, and for the work that you've done over the past, goodness, seems like longer than it is, but past short while. And I know that we spent some time working to find a superintendent that we felt was going to continue the good work that Frederick County Public Schools was doing, but also envisioned a future of great success for our community and students. And I think we found that, and that every time we meet or have a conversation, I only feel that we made the right decision, and I'm thankful for the work that you've done, as well as your staff. It's been an incredible time. I know many of them are new and changing, and that's great, too. But we've had some great and talented staff that have come through over the years who provided some phenomenal support. I want to thank Dr. Angelo as well for his service to us throughout the entirety of that tenure and with such class and dignity, and sometimes doing two and three jobs. And so appreciate you, Dr. Angelo, and never once complaining about that. And so from my heart, I appreciate the work that you did there. So with that, I'd also like to leave you with something that God's been instrumental, I think, in the work that we've done over the past couple of years, and from my personal perspective, and sort of appreciative of his support and guidance over the past years. So I'll leave the new board and those that currently work within this system to share that, may the Lord bless you and keep you, may he keep you, may he make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you, may he lift up his countenance to you and give you peace. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve in this role and thankful for the confidence that those have entrusted in me moving forward. So with that, Mr. Comstock?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with motions, there are seconds.
Seconds.
Our motions may be properly seated. Do we adjourn? All in favor, say the word saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.